All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending City Council. Happy December we've had since the middle of November. We've had a nice three-week break. It was a great three weeks. So I always enjoy those, Katie knows that. Welcome our West Virginia Wesleyan College students. We'll be looking forward to hearing your presentation here momentarily, but at the very beginning of the meeting, per state code, we have a public hearing to conduct relative to the Stockard Youth and Community Center building project. As the community is well aware, we have been going down this path toward constructing a new facility across the street connected to Stockard Youth and Community Center, a multipurpose facility. This public hearing is to hear for or against anyone who might be here to speak for that particular project. So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we open the public comment period of our public hearing. Is there a motion? A motion by Mr. Rigger, a second by Mr. Rylands. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Like, signed opposed, motion carries unanimously, public comment is open. Is there anyone here wishing to speak either for or against the proposed Stockard Youth and Community Center building located on East Main Street? Showing that there is no one here to speak either for or against, I would entertain a motion that we close the public comment period, thus closing the public hearing. A motion by Mr. Rylands, is there a second? Second by Mr. Thomas, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Like, signed opposed, motion carries. No, I didn't do that.
Tell me we don't have to do it again.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, right here.
This conference will now be recorded.
Further down the line in the meeting, we'll be taking up the third and final ordinance, or reading of the ordinance, which is number 465 pertaining to Buchanan, the city of Buchanan's Stockard Youth and Community Center during our regular meeting. So now that the public comment and public hearing has been opened and closed, we will call the regular meeting of our City Council meeting to order at 7:05. I would ask that we observe our moment of silent reflection followed by the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For council member colleagues, Mr. Sanders will be joining us here momentarily. He is presenting this evening at the menorah lighting. Today is the first day of Hanukkah, and then we always have a community celebration for that. So Mr. Sanders is representing the city at that event, and will be here at the conclusion of his remarks. Okay. We have a long list this evening. We have several presentations to get to. I would ask that anybody who is signed up to speak, please approach the podium if you can. Now, for those of you with a college, whoever's going to drive can sit over here. We can send you a microphone if you have things to say as well in the presentation. But everyone, please try to make your way up to the microphone because we are recording. We've got folks listening online so that they can hear what you have to say. Would also ask that your remarks, please try to keep them as succinct as possible as we do have a lot to get to this evening. We will begin tonight with West Virginia Wesleyan College student senate president Meredith Kottrell. Is she here? Meredith, here?
Hi.
How are you guys?
We're doing well. How are you?
Good.
So the students just wrapped up their fall semester classes. Today was reading day, and finals will begin on Friday. Finals will conclude on Tuesday, December 12th, and residence halls will close at 7:00 PM, and we will have one month off. The basketball teams will be staying for a part of the break, so please check our website for the games and please come and support. And a few of our international students will stay over break as well. Our Masters of Fine Arts residency program will take place on December 29th through January 9th, and we will have a few students living on campus, and there will be several opportunities to attend student and professional readings. So watch our website for the dates. We are excited to announce that Wesleyan will be hosting the Governor's School of Arts and for the next three summers, affording us the opportunity to host West Virginia brightest rising high school juniors in the disciplines of art, graphic design, vocal, and instrumental music, dance, and creative writing. We look forward to partnering several venues in Buchanan, especially the Colonial Arts Center. So with our CCE, on Giving Tuesday, Wesleyan students packaged 250 holiday treat bags for Head Start students. A group of students helped Buck Edwards do a reappear on a home a few weekends ago. Three students helped take down the Walk of Velour banners with Creed Buchanan. Steve Wigoff held a Narcan training on campus, and 19 students completed the training. Wesleyan students athletes assisted in moving all the books from storage unit in Holly Rosary in advance to the annual literacy volunteers book sale. Spring semester begins on January 15th. We welcome returning new and transfer students that day along with our Martin Luther King Day Junior Celebration that evening at 5:00 PM. On behalf of the students, we would like to wish you a safe and happy holiday season. So do you guys have any questions?
Any questions from the council members from Meredith? I don't believe so. Thank you so much. Good luck on finals.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Good luck, Meredith.
Thank you.
Tom Amon, I apologize. You are here from Steptown Johnson. You were here for the building commission's meeting earlier. Is there anything you would like to address the council on at this time? We just had our public hearing. Is there anything you want to add, or just for council's knowledge, the building commission passed on its third and final reading unanimously, its portion of the ordinance, so tonight is ours.
So just a few things, I guess, to keep in mind more than anything else with respect to the process as a whole. So as the mayor mentioned, the building commission had their public hearing and enacted their ordinance with respect to the project to authorize the project and the issuance of bonds early this evening at 6:00. But as we discussed during that meeting, we're in a little bit of an unusual situation here where USDA funding, as we've talked about before, is very advantageous for the project. It's much lower interest rate and much longer repayment term than you can get from typical commercial bank financing. But we don't have a budget with Congress passed, and so we cannot get, the city cannot get a letter of conditions for the financing until Congress has a budget passed, and then we need a letter of conditions from USDA in order for USDA to then authorize the bidding of the project, which is then really needed for the city to make a determination whether the cost is falling within the range that council has talked about as an acceptable cost for the project. So then, once we have bids open, only then can you then approach banks for the construction financing or the interim financing that's really necessary and being required by USDA because USDA is providing permanent financing that would pay off the construction financing. So you're at a little bit of mercy of our federal government right now with respect to that process. So that's really all I would say at this point unless there's any questions.
We left things earlier that the building commission will not meet again until the chair calls a meeting, and that will be following some, a budget being passed from Washington, DC.
Mr. Skinner, if appropriate, I would move that we bring G1 to the table so that Mr. Amon doesn't have to stick around for two hours.
Is there, is there a motion to bring G1 to the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Buckloo. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Like, signed opposed, motion carries unanimously. G1 is on the table. This is under strategic issues for discussion and/or vote, and that is the consideration of adoption on the second and final reading following a public hearing which we just had, ordinance number 465 of the city of Buchanan authorizing temporary financing of the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of improvements and additions to the Stockard Youth and Community Center facilities. Mr. Amon and/or Mr. O'Neal, who I believe is in his office due to the lack of seating, is there anything you would like to add to the ordinance, or would you like to read it by caption?
I would just say that it authorizes, obviously, the building commission to move forward as the issuer of the bonds. The main authorization here for the city is to move forward with construction of the project, assuming all the other things that we talked about lineup and we get the rates and terms that are acceptable. But it authorizes that lease between the building commission and the city, and it's under that lease where the city would ultimately repay the debt service on the bonds. Of course, that lease has to be subject to annual appropriation and the annual budgeting process by council. So that's all I would add with respect to that.
Point of order, our city charter and state statute requires the ordinance to be read by caption.
I'm happy to do that.
Please.
Okay. An ordinance authorizing and approving the temporary financing of the cost of the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of improvements in addition to the city of Buchanan's Stockard Youth and Community Center, authorizing the conveyance of real property, fixtures, and personal property and purchases to the city of Buchanan Building Commission for the purpose of facilitating the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of improvements in addition to Stockard Youth and Community Center, the leasing of such property and all project improvements and purchases by the city from the building commission, the sale and issuance by the building commission of its bond anticipation note, series 24, an amount not to exceed $5 million principal amount issued in one or more series to provide temporary financing for improvements to Stockard Youth and Community Center, authorizing the execution and delivery in agreement lease and other instruments, and authorizing and approving other documents and matters relating to the terms and security of the notes, running for other matters in connection therewith.
All right. There have been no additions or corrections or modifications to the ordinance since its first reading, so at this time, I would entertain a motion that on second and final reading, the council of the city of Buchanan pass ordinance 465. A motion by Mr. McCauley, a second by Mr. Sanders. Is there any further discussion? Hearing the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Like, signed opposed, motion 465 is passed. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Have a big Christmas.
All right. We're ready. I would call upon, at this time, Dr. Cody Martin, who is the leader of the class, to introduce the project, the students who will be presenting, and give us a little bit of background. Good evening, Dr. Martin.
Thank you, everyone. For those of you I know, nice to see you again, Mr. Thomas, Mr. McCauley, Mayor Skinner. For those that don't, I'm Dr. Cody Martin. I teach political science and public service now at West Virginia Wesleyan College. Public service is our newest major at the college. We just started this fall, myself and Dr. Marley Clever, who's here in support. And this new major, students can specialize in public administration or community engagement. This semester is the first time we're offering introduction to public service, and one of the two sections is honors-only section, and the 10 students from that class are here with me tonight. Early in the semester, Dr. Clever and I decided to give them a task outside of the normal plans for the course. We decided to have the students try and work on a local community problem, looking at through the lens of what we're doing in this new course on public administration, community engagement, nonprofits, things like that. So the 10 students with me tonight have spent the entire semester looking at the issue of how to deal with cats that are wandering around Buchanan. We are quite familiar with the varying opinions on the issue. We've had a series of guest speakers throughout the semester, Mayor Skinner included, who have given us some of the background. So the students, I tasked them with being policy analysts. Here tonight, they will speak to you about some of their policy recommendations. They'll give you some things that they did research on. Dr. Clever and I were quite impressed at the ideas that they came up with, and we hope that these will benefit the community however they can in terms of both ideas on how to deal with the humane treatment of the animals, but also in terms of funding for this issue. So I will turn it over to Jack, I believe you're speaking first?
Emma.
Emma. Emma Witt is going to speak first. She's getting the presentation pulled up. They have rehearsed their presentation. They've got right down to, I think, 15 minutes flat when they did it on Wednesday last week for Dr. Clever and I. Jack, if you want to go ahead and come explain your part, or give a little background of what you guys did during the semester while Emma gets that pulled up.
So as the semester went on, from the beginning, we looked at both the issue here in Buchanan with the cats, as well as related issues outside of Buchanan. So we found evidence of abandoned cats found outside of the US in Dubai that were brought to the attention of the government, and issues were resolved. We also found historical evidence of volunteers helping with TNR of cats here in Buchanan, and we found success with that. So through that and looking at laws, ordinances, and other aspects that helped highlight and helped rail us towards an ideal and a policy, we spent the semester coming up with a multitude of plans on actions that could be accepted within the community. So Emma, if you want to...
Would you move that microphone over to, are you going to be speaking?
Yeah, just for a second.
You move that microphone, it'll go right over there nicely.
Got one there.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone. We are the first public service honors class here at West Virginia Wesleyan College. In Buchanan, there is currently a large issue with the congregation of cats throughout the community, including around the popular riverwalk behind the college. Starting out at a small number, the cats continue to reproduce and multiply faster than the community could handle. Along with this, many of the animals are contracting rabies, making it more dangerous for the public. Although the cats are part of the environment along with other animals, they are becoming too much for some members of the community, and something must be done about it. Tonight, we are here to give you a few recommendations on what could help be done at the issue at large. So sit back, relax, and let's talk about cats.
All right, well, I am back. So the first thing we looked at were laws and ordinances already set in place, and before we discuss enforcement or modifications that we'd like to add, I would like to say that the ordinances put in place already by this township or this city have helped extraordinary. But as the issue progresses, we thought that the laws and ordinances need to be progressed or modified. So the first ordinance we looked at was number 300, and it was the feeding of undomesticated or stray cat animals. And so this ordinance currently exists and shall remain in order to keep our community safe and stop the expansion of animals congregating at large. It is important that we enforce this ordinance so others don't follow in the footsteps. Now, the ideals for enforcements that have not fully been followed was the first, for a first offense of feeding a stray animal, including cats, would be a warning or citation given by the city. A second would be a fine, and the third offense was a larger fine, and then the fourth is to step up with jail time. So that was the first article or ordinance that we felt needed to be enforced. And then the second ordinance in number 300 as well, we felt, in our own opinion, needed to be modified, and this was the optimal registration of cats under municipal ordinance. And the purpose of this, this modification, would be that under the law, dogs who are adopted or bought are, it is mandatory for them to be registered, and we felt that if it was mandatory for cats to be registered as well, it would, it would put a connection to those that are breaking the law and leaving their cats in the colonies or letting them out and growing the situation, and by doing so, it gives the city an ability to enforce the law better as we know who these cats are registered to. And then the third ordinance we looked at was also an article number 300, and it was, is quoted, "City Cooperation with State and/or County Authorities Respecting the Trapping, Capturing, Keeping, Placing for Adoption, Euthanizing, Relocating, and/or Disposing of Dogs and Cats Running at Large, Undomesticated, Wild, or Stray Animals." This part of the ordinance says that the city will cooperate with other authorities in the event that animals are running at large, and section four of this ordinance says that when cats are running at large, the owners will try to be identified, and if they can't, the animals should be euthanized, which would be a further deterrent for dumping cats into the colony and growing the situation. And that is all for me. Thank you.
All righty. Good evening. I'm Kelsey Allen, and I'm going to talk about why we should trap, neuter, vaccinate, and release. So a stressed female cat can have up to three litters per year, so in the span of that time, it's a lot of cats. Feral cats typically live in colonies from six to 12 cats. Removing only part of the colony creates larger issues of repopulation and other colonies moving into previous colonies' territory. So taking away half of the cats is only half of the issue because it's just going to cause the cats to repopulate more. It also is going to help stop fighting reproduction and the smell of the colony. And our best solution for that would be trap, spay, neuter, release the cats back to the location. So how are we going to implement this? So we have two solutions. So two local nonprofits is Pet Door Rescue and Animal Outreach Project. So the Pet Door Rescue traps cats and works with the local shelter and veterinarians to get cats spayed, neutered, and satisfy other medical needs. Then after they are done with that, they release the cats back into their initial colony locations. As for the animal outreach program, it operates out of Upsher in Lewis County. It offers spay, neuter, and rehoming assistance. So it provides free ear tipping and rabies vaccination. They just recently received the Dora State Foundation grant, where this is going to help them to spay, neuter, and rehome these animals that just were gotten picked up. So for a grant that we were looking into is the West Virginia Spay and Neuter Assistance Program. This is a federal grant program that helps local nonprofit organizations and human societies and assist in spay and neutering completed with rabies and vaccines. So basically, why should we do this? This is a benefit of TNVR. So it helps end breeding cycles, it stabilizes the population, it reduces and eventually eliminates cat colonies over time, roaming, spaying, and marking by male cats and nuisance behaviors. It helps stop the spread of infectious disease, spay and neutered cats are less stressed and healthier, and then spay or neuter cats are more peaceful with humans and other animals. So this way, it's going to help not only the cats themselves and the community altogether. Thank you.
My name's Bray Boggs. Appreciate your time this evening. And for the last part of our presentation here, I'm going to briefly touch on four programs that we have articulated and researched in class, but before I begin, I want to kind of preface this with the fact that these are all relocation programs. So before any of this, any of the four I'm going to mention occur, the first thing that will have to happen is that these cats will have to be examined by expert veterinarians to determine their healthiness and make sure that they're not aggressive. Before that happens, they also have to be trapped in an ethical fashion. So the first program was articulated by Abigail Hannan in our class, is the Veteran Therapy Program, which could be implemented at our local VA hospital in Clarksville. So as we know, veterans are very subjected to psychological issues such as PTSD, depression, and anxiety disorders, and these companion animals can be used to alleviate stress, help people cope with their feelings of loneliness and isolation, and it has been proven that these animal assisted therapy programs can be an effective preventive treatment for the continuation of depression and psychological issues that we've stated. By enacting this animal assisted therapy program at the local VA hospital, patients would be able to develop positive relationships for animals as well as have an increased quality of life. So that's for the cats themselves and for the veterans. And this next program was researched by Ruth Hayes. It is a prison partnership program, and Eva actually came up with this idea early in the semester. We kind of ran with it. It was very interesting. So first, these cats would be paired up with the well-behaved inmates in some of the prisons, local prisons around here and correctional centers. Through this pairing, the cats can become more socialized with human beings and other animals in the program. The main goal is to help the cats learn skills that will help them to become more adoptable once their time in the program is complete. And it also benefits the inmates themselves by having a sense of responsibility and a sense of purpose while in isolation. There is no specific program like this in West Virginia, but a related one is Paws for People, which is a related program that teaches and manages inmates to train dogs. So if we could apply this to cats, it would be very beneficial for a variety of different entities. The next program, Ari Hayes, in our class came up with this one, is specific to the barn cat program. These barn cat programs can cater to feral cats unable to be rehomed due to things such as aggression and intolerance to human beings, so they can be in an outside environment, while also acting as a natural pest control and diminish predation on these, on the sites of these barns and farms. There's a program related to this called the Meow Cat Rescue in Charleston. They waive adoptive fees and offer full health services before adoption, and they also allow for the consistent care of these cats while they're at the barn. So with 20,000 farms in the state of West Virginia, this obviously could be implemented as a multi-county collaboration. And finally, this is one that I kind of introduced this semester, the Barn Business Garage Program. This inspiration came from a successful program in Orange County, North Carolina, and the overall goal would be to take these untamed feral cats and transform them into a productive working cats for the community and the business barn and garage owners. So the first thing that would have to happen would be the county, or the city, with help, hopefully from the county, would contact owners of these barns and businesses and garages to see if they would be interested in taking these cats in to work as exterminators. A section at the animal shelter can be designated just for these kinds of cats, they can kind of have a working application to be adopted. Vets and volunteers will come up with the guidelines to ensure that they're being taken care of on, at these locations, the barns, businesses, and garages. And to incentivize participants, which would obviously be a concern, it could be considered to give these owners tax breaks, gift cards, vouchers for pet food, things like that, to kind of encourage them to participate in the program. And we hope that through, through all of these programs, that they can quickly squander the cat, the existing cat colonies and give cats a more suitable place to live, not only as pets, but as resources for humans, and we would love to see this grow outside of Upsher County. And with that, I just want to say thank you to you all for allowing us to come tonight. We've had a lot of fun together as a class this semester working on this project. I just want to recap that through stricter enforcement of laws and ordinances, increased attention to trap, neuter, and release initiatives, and consideration of these relocation programs, we hope that these components can be utilized to help alleviate the feral cat concerns in Buchanan. So thank you, and if you have any questions, I guess we can take those now.
Great job, guys. Thank you for taking the initiative to look at an issue hyper-local in really your backyard where you attend school, but all of our backyard here in Buchanan. So I think it was very thorough, very well done. Any comments, questions from members of council?
I would like to add, could you provide us with a copy of that PowerPoint presentation so we can make it a permanent part of our printed and recorded minutes? That's number one. Number two, that'll give us a better time to review it and, you know, make it part of our next Animal Care and Control Commission meeting and so forth. And my final question would be, would you, would you be available for follow-up once we've had the time to review it just a bit more if we have questions?
Oh, sure. We can arrange that.
Great. Great. Great presentation.
Very well done, very organized. Appreciate your efforts on this. I do have a question for the young lady right here.
Yeah.
I'm rather confused, having been a victim of feral cats. I used to own the governor's inn next door, and people would sneak into my garden and feed them. So we had to put up with the mess and the odors that the cats always gifted us.
Yeah.
How does trapping increase reproduction?
Does it decrease?
No. In the presentation, if you remove some of the cats, it increases reproduction.
If you remove the cats for a temporary amount of time, like let's say a month, it gives a chance for another colony to come in, and that's going to cause more fighting and marking of territory and more stress. So the trapping, neuter, release program would be trying to get the cats back to that location as soon as possible before sending them to one of our adoption clinics.
I see what you're saying. Okay, now I understand. I remember removing the feral cats instead of feral hogs like they have to deal with in the Southwest. I tell you.
I also, if you don't mind me interrupting as well, I also want to state the fact that the part of the ordinances as well with reinforcing the fines and the jail time, I guess, with feeding stray cats would also help with the situation that you were involved and others may be involved as well.
Oh, it's very frustrating for those who are impacted by it. I feel bad for the people in the neighborhood down there who have to live in it. It's germs, there's disease. Somebody mentioned rabies. But you think of all the other diseases that the feral felines have, and then you have dogs. I'm a dog lover. I would hate for my pet to develop some sort of illness or disease because of feral cats. Somebody being irresponsible and just releasing them. Or people feeding them when they shouldn't. I'd rather those people. Jack, that's where we need to trap the feral humans.
Okay, David.
I was not told to research that. Sorry, sir.
Unfortunately, this is a mechanism. People oftentimes don't care what the ordinances or the codes say. They want to take care of the pet. They love them. And they don't understand that the ramifications, the negative ramifications of what they're doing.
But we hope that if enforcement involves and you get hit with a fine and maybe you refuse to do it because you don't understand the repercussions, you do it a fourth time, per se, you're sent to jail. So we're hoping that repercussions enforced can alleviate people from continuing to do so.
And we often know who the persons are that are doing the things they shouldn't be doing. And I do think that we need to confront them. That's really critical. But thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I think one other element to this that we lose sight of is delicate ecological balance. Back in the day, before we had the cat colonies down through the trail, there was all kinds of rabbits, squirrels, and chipmunks, and birds, and the whole bit. It's pretty much, it's just the cats now. There's nothing else left. They've taken it all out. So anyway.
Thank you. All right. So you guys have finals that start tomorrow. So Dr. Martin wanted to make sure whenever he texted me earlier this week and says that you guys could, as soon as your presentation was over, that you could go back to campus and start studying. So if there is nothing further, questions about? Well, we need a microphone, so.
No, actually, you don't.
Well, we do because of the online. Thank you, Jack.
Oh, you're fine.
I too would like to say that your presentation was very, I feel, informative. It's very much needed. And as a member of the city's Animal Care and Control Board, I thank you all for taking the time that you worked on it and put it together. I would first like to say to our mayor that I have mentioned this before, maybe not to you directly, but I totally agree with having people register their cats and pay taxes on them. When I pay my property taxes at the courthouse, I have to do my dogs. And then I come down here and pick up my, do my cats as well. I think that's a great place to start because that's going to give you an idea of how many cats are accounted for to how many households within the city limits. The second thing, when you speak of the trap, neuter, release program, Jack, one of the things that helps them work big time is when you get a group of cats and they're in a little colony, like they're in a little family unit, and you get them spayed and neutered, they will basically, I hate to compare them to this, but kind of like be a mini gang, and they take over that particular area. Now, where this young lady mentioned, if you remove them for a while, a couple of days even, here come the other cats. But if you've got that colony established, because when they take cats, and I've never known them not to do this, when cats are tracked and taken to be neutered and then again released, they are thoroughly checked out health-wise, they are vaccinated, and in most cases, the ears tipped. Now, once in a while, a cat will slip through and not get its ear tipped. But in most cases, the ears tipped. And that way, if you see a cat with tipped ear, you know it cannot reproduce. If you've got that colony established, other cats can't come in. Now, in mentioning, and I am going to go here because we've noticed the same thing on Park Street. Our squirrels, our bunnies, our chipmunks are disappearing. But we've got a bigger, well, as big a problem as the cats. I don't think you all realize how many red-tailed hawks have taken up residence within our city limits. I know for a fact that on Park Street, on three occasions, we've tried to stop a hawk from killing a squirrel. They'll just come right along and grab them. They'll take a squirrel, they'll take a chipmunk, they'll take a rabbit, they'll take a kitten, and they'll take small dogs. And as the owner of Chihuahuas and Chihuahua mixes, I know this well. But I think the biggest thing we could do right now to help the city would, A, start having basically a census of how many households, you know, per house, how many cats do you have? And make them accountable. Secondly, we've got people in the community. We've got one or two in my neighborhood that you could threaten them with sending them to Alcatraz for life. And they're still going to let those cats out running loose. Now, before this evening's meeting, my cat, my one cat got out, and three of us were out looking. We finally got him back in, but he slipped out, and we got him back in within a half hour. But you've got to teach these people to keep their cats indoors. Next, if we could establish for the city a trap, neuter, release program, I think it would help tremendously. And then that way, you wouldn't be having the overpopulation getting fed. And at the risk of sounding impudent, just like people feed the homeless and they give them change to go buy their, whatever it is they go buy other than food, there are those people who are going to feed, whether it's a cat, a dog, a squirrel, a chipmunk, a bunny, maybe even a deer. Do you really want to send them to Tiger Valley? I think they're kind of overcrowded now as is. But it would be nice to see something done about the people that have domestic cats that are turning them loose to run because a lot of those cats are reproducing, at least the males are.
When I owned the governor's inn, I would have driven them to Tiger Valley.
Pardon me?
Well, they were putting food in my garden, and I had feral cats coming into my property.
Well, that's trespassing.
And trying to run a business. Oh, but it was all in the name of the cats.
That's trespassing. But anyway, thanks much. You all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, let's entertain a three-minute recess to allow our friends from Westland to head back to campus. We thank you guys very much. Good luck on finals. Have a Merry Christmas. Enjoy your time with your family, and we'll see you when you get in January.
Thank you for tuning in.
Well done.
Had a nice little recess there. Kids did a good job. Appreciate them coming in. Now, we have a presentation from some of our Uptown County Schools counselors. Sarah, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Elstock. I am a school counselor at Buchanan Uptown High School. And the School Counselors in Uptown County, we meet monthly and discuss what's going on in our schools, in our programs, what's good, what can we improve on. And one of the ideas we came up with was to get out into the community and present what we actually do in the schools for our students. So I have provided a handout. It should be in your packet. I sent it to Trusa this morning. It has listed all of our school counselors in our county. Our elementary schools, Buchanan Academy, which is our largest elementary schools, they have two school counselors. Hodgeville and Tenerton each have a school counselor full-time. Union Washington District, French Creek, and Rock Cave, they each have a counselor that goes between two different schools. So our students are serviced by school counselors in that capacity. The evaluation standards that school counselors follow under West Virginia school counselors, we, in order to be a school counselor, you have to have a master's. So we all have, are working on getting our masters in counseling. It's not like a guidance counselor of back in the day. We are counselors. We have the training for that. And there are five standards that we are evaluated on. Our different standards about program development, program delivery, data-driven accountability, evaluation of our own programs, leadership and advocacy, and our own professional growth and responsibilities. I ask representatives from each of the levels. I also forgot to include the middle school and the high school in my introduction. I apologize. The middle school has three counselors, and one per grade level. That's how their school is structured. And then the high school, we have three counselors. And we're separated by alphabet for important meetings, like SAT meetings, IUPs, 504s. But we will speak and work with any student. It doesn't matter. We're not separated by grade level. We're not separated by alphabet when it comes to the general services of our students. On the second page, it has elementary-level programming. All of our programming, all of our counselors, you know, number one is to be there for our students. We provide individual and group counseling to meet the individual needs of our students. This is based upon self-referrals, needs assessments, staff referrals, and parent referrals. We are very involved in any crisis interventions that happen in our schools and even in our schools within the county and in surrounding counties. We've been called into other counties in the past when there's been a crisis to help out with that. I know they've also worked at the college in the past when there have been situations there. And we have the, you know, the college would also come to our aid, the counseling staff, if needed. We all collaborate with our teachers and our administrations to conduct either functional behavioral assessments, behavior plans, and work with teachers to help students be the best student, best person, while they're at school and help them, you know, even outside of school when needed. The elementary school, it has their program and curriculum that you can see. They have developed curriculum that is consistent for all of our students at the elementary level, including things about like just social, emotional, bullying, drug safety, body awareness. We do drug prevention, career exploration, human growth and development. And even at the elementary levels, we're already talking about post-secondary. What do you want to do after high school? Where do you want to go? What do you want to do? The middle school level, again, their team gave a little bit more descriptive information for you about just some of the numbers, the data with the students that they've identified. We also do suicide prevention, presentations, groups, follow-ups with our students as needed. And at the high school level, the middle school starts the career exploration, gets more focusing on what exactly do you want to do in high school? How can you develop a schedule? How can you develop opportunities in Uptown County schools? And the last page is at the high school, which is, again, where I work. So it's more to my knowledge. But a lot of just collaboration, collaborations with the teachers, Fred Everly, Pierpont for our dual-credit students, collaboration with our virtual program, collaboration with just different colleges in the state, the Higher Education Authority, and then with other organizations for scholarships and field trips and opportunities for our students. We, and we go all year, pretty much. We, it's constantly, it's that cycle, you know, you have that calendar. You know, we're getting ready to switch years, do finals at the high school as well, to switch semesters after the holidays. So looking towards graduation, always. How can we get our students to be academically and ready to be a productive citizen? And we're here also to not only inform you of what services we provide to students in our schools, but also to ask for your feedback. We have advisory councils that we are tasked with organizing each year. This year, we decided to go outside of our box and come out into the community to not only present to you what we're doing in the schools, but to see your opinions and your feedback, your ideas, your suggestions. There's a QR code on the last bit of your packet that just has a couple of questions. And I'm going to let my coworker, Ms. McCoy, speak about that advisory council and why it's so important for us and our programs and for our students. Thank you, Sarah.
Hello. I'm Pearl McCoy, and I am a certified school counselor and licensed social worker at the high school. And today, I stand before you to address the topic that is paramount in importance in the realm of education and is the guidelines that set forth by the American School Counselors Association, which we call ASCA, for the establishment of functioning of the school counselor advisory committees. Now, as my coworker pointed out, Sarah, we have tried this different ways over the last couple of years post-COVID. It became, we pulled in a lot of community members into our schools so that we could have them in our schools, let them be in the schools, let them see the school environment. We started out at the middle school because at that point, we were trying to get the bond passed to see that we needed a new middle school, we needed a new high school, or however that bond went to the renovations that were needed in our school systems to assist our students and their educational needs. And that worked very well. We had business leaders come in, especially business leaders that had students in schools or bringing babies in schools so that they could see what we were doing, see our faces, know what we did, and for us to ask the hard questions, which is, what do we need to do differently? And those were very productive, and they came up with a lot of conversations that we had as our school counselors together in our school meetings that we had. From there, it evolved. We had two meetings that year, and the second meeting was pretty much the same. But we had it at the high school. So we divided up into different classrooms and what have you. The year after that, we added some students. We added some teachers. We added our parents involved in that to ask, what can we do differently? What are we doing well? What do we need to work on? And how can we help not only our students, but our families and our community in order to prepare students for the real world they're in? Last year, it kind of fell off. We don't have a lot of involvement. It was difficult to get people in. We're all busy. So this year, we decided to go outside the box and to say, how can we find collaboration between our community, our parents, our students, our administrators, our board office, and our school to help make more productive workers? What do you need from us? What kind of things are you seeing in the community with your students that are coming into your establishments or working at your establishments to better prepare them for the world of adulthood? Right? Right? So that is why we are here today, because not only those ASCA guidelines that we have established for, we have to have an advisory committee, we need that collaboration between all parties and to further have outreach with the community. We have, as the high school, have visited several schools in New England as well as here in West Virginia, we went to Wheeling Park to find out what they do with communities and business leaders in the communities to help with that collaboration. And one of the things that they do is they partner with them. And I don't mean partner like paycheck, like here's your check, do with what you need. We have business leaders, or they have business leaders coming into their schools and attending classes to say, look, this is where you're going to use geometry. This is where you're going to use this math that you're learning. This is where you're going to learn and use that public speaking when you're out into the world. And it's just not furthering the education, the secondary education, because we need people to be employed. We need people to work. So given those students an understanding of, oh, here is the big picture, is what we need. And then also collaborating with those business leaders to say, our students, we can bring a classroom to your business to see actually what you do, to become invested, to say, you know what, I want to be that person. So we come to you today, not only for your, you know, investment in the QR code and looking at the packet and what we do, but also with an understanding of what we want to provide to our students and how we want to make future leaders out of them. So at this point, we're just exploring opportunities to see that collaboration and to build those relationships with our community business leaders. And community could mean not just McKenna, but further on, Harrison County, you know, Braxton County, whatever direction they need to go. So we are willing to take our students any direction to say, look, this is how this can be utilized in a real-world setting, because right now they only see their world and the world tick-tock. So we want to expand their ideas and expand why they need to be learning, what they're learning in the schools, so that they can become those future leaders, so that they can incorporate that into a way to be a good citizen, pay taxes, have a job, have a career, have a family, whatever their dream of success is. So at this point, I thank you for your time and encourage you to look through your packet and to utilize that QR code, because that stuff's going to come right back to us with suggestions on especially collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. What is McKinney-Vento service? What is that?
McKinney-Vento is a federal mandate that says that we have to identify homeless children. And what homeless can mean is not necessarily, you know, we're living in a van under the bridge, but that they're living with somebody other than their biological parents. So that could mean foster care, that could mean grandparents, that could mean aunt, uncle, what have you, that could be sleeping on a friend's couch. So we have to identify them as homeless and what that does is that opens up an opportunity for them, not only during their high school or their education, primary and secondary education, but also for the higher education, because if they're identified as homeless, they can also carry those funding and those resources for them into a higher education.
But how do you identify them unless they come and tell you?
Well, there's multiple ways that we do that. We either do that through word of mouth and then, of course, we check with the student, we check with whoever they're with and whoever they're staying with. They also do that through emergency cards. So there are emergency cards who they identify that they're living with, that has a parent, uncle, aunt, you know, family member, foster care, that has all those opportunities on there. And then through there, those services can be provided, things like, like, for example, if we have a family that becomes homeless because of a fire. So now they can, now they can become, that McKinney-Vento, it opens up a lot of funding for buying them necessities for their home, for their body, you know, what have you. So that becomes...
What percentage of our students are in that circumstance?
I don't have that information right on hand.
I've been told it's like 60%. Does that sound ridiculous or...
That seems a little extreme. That seems a little high to me.
Those are a little high.
That's a little high, yeah. But there are quite a few. I've also worked for the, being a licensed social worker, I worked for DHHR in the past and have, I currently train kinship, foster, and adoptive families with the Pride Program in trauma. And I can tell you that having anywhere between 12 and 25 people in those classes, the majority of them are those grandparents. So, and that's in our region.
Last I saw, Braxton County led the state in number of students in their school system living with non-parents. It was like 73% or so. We were in the 40s is what, around 40, I think is what I saw. And then, but I think what you're referring to is, is what used to be considered the free and reduced lunch percentage, we're between 50 and 60% as a county in that percentage, but that doesn't equivocate to homelessness or to students not living with parents.
Correct, that's income.
Well, it's a crisis, definitely.
Yes.
And I have a friend, good friend of mine, that adopted, if you recall, a number of years ago, Relling County, had two foster parents that had nine children in terrible, terrible, terrible conditions. And my friend adopted one of them and it's worked out real well for that individual, for the boy. But nothing happened to those foster parents. Nothing happened. And that's part of the problem we have in our society.
Exactly. And I am not a representative of DHHR at this point, but, you know, I can tell you that there are over 6,000 kids in care in the state of West Virginia and that's a big number. And that is definitely on the minds of our policymakers and our governor and...
I think being a social worker is one of the most dangerous jobs that's out there.
I don't disagree with you.
I was chair, I was chairman of the board of Mountain Cap.
Yes.
And it was absolutely unbelievable what's happened to the nuclear family. And I don't know what our society's going to do to correct it. It's scary.
I agree, there's a lot of options.
Earlier to the meeting, you saw a representative from West Virginia Whaling College, Meredith Conkrum, who brought us updates of the college. Now, I know the school system is more varied between the different grades and campuses and so forth throughout the community, but is that something that you think would be beneficial to have more, more of a relationship with city council, have somebody maybe opposite meeting of Meredith, somebody from the school system updating us on what is happening, fun things, great things, weird things, serious things, you know, so that we feel more connected?
That's a, when we have our monthly meetings, the very first one, we had, you didn't see the number of people that were involved in our meetings, it took us almost four hours to go around and that was just after a month of being in the school. And yes, you know, people do tend to, the struggles, but there are a lot of really good things going on in our schools. And we, we have the privilege kind of as counselors, we're not admin, we're not teachers assigned to a class, we are able to be out in the whole school and trying to get involved in the classes, meet the students, just engage in the conversations, know their names, so they feel welcomed and they feel, you know, wanted. And I think in the community is, it's very important to, to stalk her with the programs that we have to, to just really incorporate our schools and to get into our schools more in a, in a planning commission. We talked about that, about just getting more people and more opportunities in the school. Today, for example, the fire department came to the high school, our forensic science class just completed an ARSA, the fire department came up and spoke to our students about firefight safety. You know, something that you don't think of a high school student as needing, but they tend to get forgotten, you know, like you think this is elementary school...
And they still get well.
Yeah, well, you know, can we have a plastic hat? We didn't have enough.
And that's why I think we could have a platform here, it would need to be brief, it couldn't be 20, 30 minutes, but, you know, if five minutes, get the opportunity to have a platform there in the city, you know, to just talk about something. And again, I think that would help build more cohesion with the, with the community.
Well, we always have media presence here, so it's a dual, you know, we become informed and as community leaders, we have, you know, we have centers of influence of our own, but we also have media here that can take the message further.
Well, and the wonderful thing is, is that we have Mr. Anthony McDaniel's with us today and he was, he oversaw the counselors and helped with our, facilitate our meetings, our needs, anything that we needed to do. And we have a new person that's taking over, Casey Bastin is taking over that role from beginning this week, right? So hopefully, we can get her on board with that and maybe she can be the one, or she can designate an individual to say, here's what we need to do, because community outreach is great. There's so much going on with the schools now, both good and bad, really bad and ugly, right? And to have somebody to come in and talk with you all about what's happening in the schools would be, would be a great way for us to have that collaboration.
You mentioned 6,000 kids in homes in the state?
Yes, across the state.
We've also, in our weekly meeting, been told that we don't have the capacity or the foster parents and that we're shipping kids out of state and it's costing a fortune and they have to go visit the kids out of state twice a year. Is that...
Can I, can I?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to take this badge off.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm not working for the school system, but I don't work for the department either. But having had that role before, I worked both youth services and child protective services in the past. And yes, the truth is, is that there are some children that the state of West Virginia cannot serve. You cannot serve a five-year-old who is an arsonist and is threatening to kill everybody in their family. We cannot do that, we do not have the facilities in the state to do that. So unfortunately, some of our children are not being sent out of state, or are being sent out of state for that reason. Our foster care kids, the kids that their parents are in the court system and involved in working through that process to be, to learn how to become safe parents and to keep their kids safe in their homes, those kiddos are being placed with relative foster cares. And basically what that means, if there is a viable relative in that home somewhere, both sides of the family, that has a clear background check and can pass a home inspection and a home study and will go through the process, they will be able to keep those children. Because who's better than raising kids than their own families, right? So if I'm grandma, or I'm auntie, or I'm cousin, you know, whatever, I know families, I know traditions, I know routines, I know things like that. I know the, and I have the ability to help children that are familiar with me already, right? So that would be the hope. But if there's no viable family members, which sadly, there are some families that are in that situation, they do not have somebody that can pass a background check in any of their families. Sometimes those families, those family members live out of state and they do an ICPC, which is an Interstate Compact Agreement with that state that says, the state of West Virginia will pay for that child to go to this family that they know that lives in Maryland, right? But inevitably, some kiddos need treatment because of the trauma that they've suffered. And West Virginia is starving for viable treatment facilities and they just don't have them. The state won't open up for them, they won't give them the ability to provide this kind of treatment, but not everybody wants to deal with kids that are traumatized.
They want to turn their backs on them.
I don't want to say that. It's that, it's difficult, it's difficult to deal with these children. For example, we have many facilities in the state of West Virginia that have gone from a boy-girl facility and are just dealing with boys. Why? Boys are easier to deal with. Girls have a lot more trauma issues, they have a lot more behavioral issues that impact how they receive treatment. They need longer-term treatment. And a lot of the Medicaid services that we have only provides for treatment for two years. So that's why you get the jump around.
And many of them are sexually abused, which is a very difficult thing to do.
They have a lot of traumas, whether, that from any of their abuses, whether that's emotional, whether that's sexual, whether that's neglect. There's a lot of issues that go, that cause issues for why treatment is needed. The job, again, I do not work for the department, I am not a department worker at this time. The job of the department is to ensure the safety of those children. At least once a month, they are, see those kids every month in a treatment facility and in the homes. So, but for example, if there is a treatment foster home, not just the resident, not just the kinship, if there's a treatment foster home, like a Presley Ridge, or Burlington, or Neco, or whatever, then that individual is trained enough to go in there, the people that work with their foster homes and our therapeutic foster homes, they can go see those children in place of the department worker for two times in a quarter, right? So at least once a quarter, the department worker has to see that kid in residence. So you're, you're having department workers run not only all over this state, but all over other states, Arkansas, Florida, South Carolina, Virginia, Tennessee, Ohio, you know, I think we had some as far as Califor, or not California, but Colorado and maybe like Minnesota, I think. So it becomes difficult for that travel to happen and they get creative. Sometimes they'll share, hey, I see you've got this kid and you're in, you're in Jackson County and you've got this kid in the same placement as I do, so can you get my kid this month, I'll see your kid next month? So it is difficult and it is a system and it is hard and the problem is, is that our children are the victims. And those are the things that we're dealing with in the school system. We're dealing with these kids that are moving from place to place to place, in and out of treatment facilities, in and out of mental health facilities. And it becomes difficult to get an education when they're dealing with so much.
If I can throw one suggestion out there, is when I, I went to a Division One college back in the 60s and I also was a member of the YMCA. And we had a program for many of the athletes, I was an athlete at the college, and our coaches went through a system where with YMCA, they were asking the athletes to do it like a boys' club, adopt a student in the local school system. And with Wesleyan here, that might be a program that'd be well worthwhile.
Right.
That have, that have both, we have, when I was in college, we didn't have women's sports.
Right.
Just men. And with women today, you've got both the women and the men, one person could take one child per week and be with them one day a week. And that made a huge impact back then. I don't know if they do that kind of stuff now, but that's not a bad idea maybe.
I think we tried, we tried to do that several years ago. Mr. McDaniel stopped me. We had partners, but a lot of that deals with the fact that they're college students and whether they can get to those students or not and the kind of resources available. But we will take that back and see if that is something that, you know, because we have a good relationship with Wesleyan and their counseling department as well, to see if we have folks...
And it helps the young student at Wesleyan in addition to the student that works...
Absolutely, absolutely. So we will definitely look into that.
Thank you for your, taking the badge off.
I did not work for this West Virginia as a DHHR worker any longer, but, you know, for 30 years, I've worked in a capacity of either residential facilities, director, I was the director of Presley Ridge and a director of the West Virginia Children's Home, which is owned and operated by the state of West Virginia. So I, I...
You've seen a lot that I have this year.
Oh, I've got stories. I've got stories.
For another time.
Right, for another time. But yes, there, our children are struggling.
It's hard to find somebody to work in that position.
Yes.
My youngest daughter worked in that area for about a year, year and a half and she just said, Dad, I can't do anything. It's just so challenging and depressing and she's...
Hurt-out and secondary trauma is high and rampant in our... And rampant in, in our DHHR workers, as well as our school system. Because I, I know that it wears on our principals to hear the stories, or to hear the things that our kids are going through, and to work with law enforcement. And it is a, it is an obstacle. And I, I don't know if I want to call it an obstacle. It, it is just part of our job. It is something that we, that we struggle with daily, and we go home thinking about these, these babies, their babies, and, and their, and their plight, and how we can help them.
It makes them, it does create obstacles for them to study for their exams, to do their projects, to have the guidance outside of school to do their work. And it puts a lot of weight on the school to maintain that, you know, you can't expect a child to be able to go home and have a parent to help them with their homework, or to have the resources at home to do that, so.
So that would be a great thing for that new Stockard Center, is that, you know, that we have that tutoring available to them with a bus that will get them near home, you know, so, so I don't know what that entails, but.
Well, thank you for your compassion and kindness. That's really good.
Thank you for coming. Thank you.
And we'll check with Ms. Bastin, Mrs. Bastin, to see if she, you know, can arrange something for us to be here.
How about we drop to Teresa or Ambie to set that up?
Yes, we'll, yeah, we'll take it back to the floor and get that worked out.
Yeah.
Abby, I have one question for you on this, if I may. Your suicide prevention, I am very aware of that and have dealt with it in other parental groups outside of West Virginia. But my question is now, in our own community, in the last few years, we've had several children who have fell into taking that action. And on a national level, we're seeing it happen over and over and over again, and to greater extremes. My question to you is, if a child is conveying to you any symptom, or any idea, or any conversation, do you have a legal responsibility to contact the parents and law enforcement so that that child can get the professional help that that child needs in a timely fashion?
Yes, ma'am, we do. As the school system, and please stop me, Mr. McDaniel's, if I get anything incorrect. As the school system, if a, a child comes to us with that, or if they're brought to us with that, sometimes we get their friends that say, hey, I got a text message from my friend and I'm concerned. We call that individual down. We talk to them. We talk to them about, we use the words, do you want to commit suicide? Do you want to die? Do you have a plan? If at any time they say yes, or I've hurt myself, or I've cut myself, or I've done whatever, our next step is to call the family. We call the family, we call the family up there to pick up that child. We don't leave that child, we don't send that child back to class until their family gets there. With, they're in eyesight, they're in, at the hall, at all times. So if they go, can I go back to class and get my stuff? I will walk you back to class. I will get, we will walk back and we will do that. Do, can I go to the bathroom? Go to the bathroom, check the stalls, make sure that they're safe until the family gets there. One of our requirements per policy is that that parent will leave with that child, and they are to take them immediately to the ER for an evaluation. If we find that that child, for some reason, that family says, I'm not picking them up, they do this all the time. Our immediate next call is Child Protective Services. So we don't get involved with law enforcement. We make it a, a Child Protective Services case, and then therefore the Child Protective Services can determine whether that child's in danger or not, because that is not our role. We, we don't do that. The same thing with the, with the doctor visit. They have to go for an evaluation. We are not qualified even as mental health providers, because we are all master's levels counselors. We are not, we don't have the credentials behind our name to provide that diagnosis. So then our goal is to follow up with them. And our main charge this year has actually been to find out when children have been through mental health facilities, and to do a handle with care with all of their teachers when they return, and to put them on a checklist, just to make sure that we're checking in with them on a routine basis, more routine than we would any other child, because they are at a higher level of risk. So we want to check in with them to ensure that they're safe and that they feel safe, and that they don't feel like they want to harm themselves. So that's a very good question. And we do provide education every year for our students about 988, how to get help when they need it, you know, because a lot of our students are doing things at three o'clock in the morning while we're sleeping, and we're not available for them. So our hope is that through 988 and through understanding and having a safe adult, not only at home, but also at school, that they will be able to receive the help that they need.
Bless you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great holidays.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Sorry for so much time.
It's a good discussion, and, and I mean, we, we, I think, I think some of us could be here and talk about it for quite a long, a lot more time, but we, we also would like to get home and sleep before 3:00 AM ourselves, so.
Well, you know, I do Saturdays and weekends, and I do, I do six-hour trainings with a lunch break in between.
Thank you very much.
Now, I don't sleep most of the time.
Thank you.
Well, you don't sleep that much, do you?
I like to do.
All right. Jason is still with us. He is joining us on TV. Jason, can you still hear us?
I can. Can y'all hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Hello, Jason.
Hi, guys.
Um, Jason is here to discuss G7. I'll go ahead and preface before Jason begins. JC Films, as, as you're all aware, they are the film company that has produced a few movies here in Buchanan thus far. One that's, it's quite popular around here right now is Hank's Christmas Wish, which we had a red carpet event over at Wesleyan back in November for that film. It is out on streaming services now. You can, you can see it. Hank's Christmas Wish Two will be, begin, will begin to be filmed here next week. And so JC Films submitted to us a request for some, some funding assistance, since they're doing so many films in our community. The Revenue and Expense Review Committee has met and considered the request, and we do have a recommendation. But we will, we'll hear Mr. Campbell's presentation, and then we'll take up the recommendation. So Jason, the floor is yours.
Thank you, guys. I'll be brief. All of you guys, council members, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. So I have a Christian film company, family film company in, here in West Virginia. We make a lot of films. You know, we have, the overall passion that we're working on right now is to really change filmmaking in West Virginia. You know, we're one of six states that doesn't have a film school. We've made about 30 films here in West Virginia. We're reaching out to counties across the, the state to make films there. We want to change the narrative, and we think we can change the narrative of West Virginia through films. If you think about films in West Virginia, you think of hillbillies and opioids. And so we want to change that narrative by making films. Your particular city is just a beautiful city to shoot films, and especially around Christmas time. I think we've made six films or used the city at some level to make films there. What I would really like to talk to you guys about is this continual film that we bring Dean Cain to Buchanan every year around this time. We show a film, make a film, a Christmas film, highlight Buchanan, highlight the community. You know, your community is loaded with a tremendous amount of talent, a lot of young people that want to be engaged in filmmaking. And we opened our doors. You guys have seen that open our doors to the community, for those to get involved in what we're doing. I think it's just a great highlight for Buchanan, that we're using Buchanan as our location for all of these Christmas films. And of course, you know, Dean will be in town for a couple of days next week working on the, on the film. The request for funding is, is just, just an ask, just to say, hey, is this a possibility? These films all cost somewhere between $60,000 to $80,000 apiece. We're funding them individually. We are a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), so we have outside help from investors and those that enjoy our film and help make our films. But this is just a request to come to the city and say, hey, could you guys help on this particular project, so that we can come in and make the film, and, and just to enjoy time with the community.
Well, thank you, Jason, and thank you for your kind words about our community. We certainly agree. I think many of us have said for, for years that Buchanan around Christmas time is, is a, is a perfect movie backdrop. So we're, we're happy that you, that you agree with us. And we've got some folks here in, in the room that have starred in, or well, have been part of, I wouldn't say starred, but part of your, of your, of your movies. One of the first scenes, we have, we have, we have Jody. Jody's back here. Jody's.
Hi, Jason.
Jody's been in, in, in the film Hank's Christmas Wish. So, but we enjoy having you here in our community. So on G7, I will say that the Revenue and Expense Review Committee received a request beginning, in a range, beginning around $5,000 request from JC Films. The Revenue and Expense Review Committee considered the request, and our recommendation to City Council is that we assist JC Films with a $2,500 contribution for, for, for now. And, and, you know, and if they want to, you know, ask us again in, in future fiscal years, you know, we can take it up each request as it comes. But we, we thought it would be good to, to, to help out where we could, and so the recommendation is 2,500.
Jason, if I could, if I could ask, to help.
Sure.
With this, or request, and then of course to help us with future requests. Are you doing any record-keeping as far as hotel rooms that your time here is utilized, any catering services, any, any, anything that makes a financial impact in the city of Buchanan? Besides the, I will acknowledge the tremendous recognition and the value the films themselves provide Buchanan by you displaying the key elements of Buchanan, City Hall, you know, the Jawbum Park, anything that has the name Buchanan on it. But otherwise, do you keep a record or try to track what kind of economic impact during the days of filming you have?
We do. So all of our films have the line item budget for everything that we spend, whether it be, you know, the hotels that we use, the meals that we use. Sometimes there's a location fee in some of the locations that we use, not the city, but other places that we've used in Buchanan. We've offered funding for locations. Plus, there's, there's minimal payroll there. Most people that we use are volunteers, but there are some paid staff that we use on productions to help us organize the films before we come to town.
The, the other question is, I know, I was at the red carpet event for the premiere of Hank's Christmas Wish. I guess one, now I guess you're working on Hank's Christmas Wish Two, which is great. If, if you could help us in the future by giving us a little bit more of a snippet of how often Buchanan's recognizability is in that film, and is, are we recognized at the end of the film, at the credits? I haven't had time to go back and take a look.
Yeah.
Is there a lot in the credits that say filmed a location of Buchanan, West Virginia, for instance?
There is, yes. And we go even a little bit further than that, because we've used so many multiple departments there in the city, that it's just not the city, but the fire department, the police department. We recognize every location that we use, you know, giving them credit in the, in the credits of the film. Yes, sir?
And I would say, Mr. Mayor, for our benefit in the future, and Jason, that could be part of the presentation, the packet, because I put a lot of value on that. That's, those are in-kind valuable assets to us, each time that hits a screen somewhere that our community is being hobbled and so forth. So that has a tremendous added value to it as well.
And Hank's Christmas Wish One is doing extremely well. You know, there's, Amazon Prime is a free service for those that subscribe to it. But about 90% of the films that go on Prime are not part of Prime. They're, you're, you have to rent them, or you have to buy them. But Hank's made it, and that's, that's saying something about the quality of the film as well as the film itself. So that's, that puts a lot more eyeballs on the film that when you go to Amazon, which millions of people do, they go to the movies, the Christmas section, and there's Hank's Christmas Wish. So it's got a lot of eyes on it.
I, I thought the quality was, was, was wonderful. It was very well done.
Well, thank you.
One thing I was asked to, to mention, and this goes along with your schedules, and I know you try to keep a tight schedule when you're filming. I had a couple of folks mention that they did show up to serve as extras, and they showed up at a time that was given and printed on the schedule, but the filming had just wrapped, and they missed out on it. And in your business, I know it's good to, to stay on time and run ahead.
It is.
But it's probably something to mention, and you might not have even been around at that time, you know, that, you know, try to also keep, keep in mind that folks are preparing and, you know, to get their 15 minutes of fame, or their 15 seconds of fame. So be a little more sensitive on that, I would ask, in the future, to your, your production crews.
Thank you so much. Yes, I agree.
Randy, if we put on our Buchanan website that they can go to Amazon Prime and get Hank One?
No, but we can.
We should do that.
We, we certainly can. Yeah, sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And be anxious to see how many eyeballs actually view this.
Is there a restriction on that, Jason, for us to do that?
No, not at all. You, you absolutely just, you know, make the link available.
Sure. Okay. All right, that, that answers my questions and so forth. But I'd like to see us continue to support you and.
Thank you.
You know, make, make, at the same time, continue to promote Buchanan tourism through the visual effects of the cinema is very valuable. Has a lot more value than sometimes we, we give it recognition of.
Especially when it's positive.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Campbell, I know, I read in my Buchanan a month or two ago that you had made an overture to the county commission. Have they stepped up yet to help out with the financing of your ventures?
They, their response to me was to contact you.
Okay.
The other question is, certainly Buchanan is, as an entity and as a community, our, our city organization supports the arts. We just dedicated in the last couple of months our Colonial Arts Center. Maybe one of your future productions, whether it's Hank's Wish Two or something else, we could premiere it at our theater here downtown. Good idea.
Would love to do that. Love to do that. Absolutely.
Good idea, David.
Okay.
I recommend that we accept the recommendation of the Revenue Committee to provide them $2,500. I'll second. Let Pam have it.
And who's that? I got. Well, let's do it this way. David, you're, all right, Thomas, you're on the Revenue and Expense Review Committee. Let's do the motion by McCauley, or motion by Pam, seconded by McCauley. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay.
I mean, the motion was unanimous with the Revenue Committee.
It was, yes.
And I made that.
So, okay, so, so after, after consideration from the committee, the council wishes to support JC Films twenty, in the amount of $2,500 to assist with Hank's Christmas Wish Two. That motion was made by Pam and seconded by McCauley. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries. All right, sir?
Thank you so very much.
Oh, one last thing.
We'll see you next week.
Are you, you're coming next week, right?
We are.
And are you desiring to use City Hall?
Yes.
Okay. What day, what day are you desiring? Because we need to prepare, we need to make sure that we, because last year it was kind of a, it was a wave that came through, and we weren't necessarily prepared for how much the, the workflow day was going to be disrupted. So we just kind of need to know what you're, when you're coming and what, what time.
Most, most all the filming is like the night, the ice skating rink, of course Hank's Apartment, you know, some other different locations that we've used over time. The big one is, you know, of course Dean plays the mayor, so he'll be here. We'd like to use the office, and we don't need the council chambers. We just need your office, Mayor.
Okay. I'll clean it up.
It's Sunday, Sunday around 11:00 AM on December the 17th.
December 17th.
That's a Sunday, right?
Yeah.
We only know one employee that'll be here this time.
I'll let you in.
All right. I'll, I'll definitely have Heather reach out and make sure we've got all of our ducks in a row.
Okay. If that should change, please, please do communicate, just so we know if it's, if it's a workday, and we can make some, some arrangements.
Well, Dean's here just for the weekend, and he plays the mayor, so we know it's going to be, so we know it's going to be Sunday, and I'm thinking around 11:00 AM we'll get there.
Okay. Sounds good. All right.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. I'm very grateful.
We'll see you next week.
Take care.
Thank you.
All right. All right. We are through our recognized guest portion at 8:40. Jody or Jerry, do you all have anything? They're shaking their head like, no, okay, we're good. Okay. We will consider the public comment time closed. All right. We are down to department reports. If Jerry is awake, he can come in and give us an update. Hello.
Hey, I've been reporting. See you later.
Hey, Jerry. We got some new projects started since you got here.
I think, I think what would be most appropriate is that we give our street department and Jerry a lot of praise and thank you for all of the great Christmas decorations. I said this morning, I know I've, I've texted him, I've called him, because I've wanted the park to look just so, and, and the trees on Main Street. So thank you for all of your work in decorating our city, and for all the work you did for the Dickens Christmas Fair. It's very much appreciated. Do you hear?
That's, that's the street department. That's the guys out there in the bucket for us. So, yes, absolutely. It's been a long, cool day up there.
Good job.
Yes, sir. As far, again, as far as report from last meeting, I have nothing new to report, other than we have been decorating, and we finally got the garage next door if we're down, if you didn't notice that. So that's surely all I have. Mayor wants those questions.
A good short report. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Arnold?
Good job.
Thanks, sir.
Jerry, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On some of the areas that have alleys, some of the, there's some potholes in those pretty size for some time. So the people just call into the city and
Call City Hall, yes, and get a work order on ours.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll get to them just scheduled permits.
Yeah, I understand.
Yes, sir.
Back to you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Our finance director, Ann Barrow.
God told me I had to make this three minutes, but I don't know if he
Well, you also have some things under strategic, so I don't know that three minutes is gonna, is gonna do it. But we have faith in you, so go ahead and try.
I'll try to hurry. Balances, December 2023, general fund money market and checking, eight hundred seventy-six thousand seven fifty-five, and then your CD's at eighty-six thousand five fifty. Store landmarks, three thousand thirty. Stocker Youth Center Capital Campaign went up just a little bit. We had a few, few small donations, so we're now at four hundred forty-three thousand seven seventy-five with the $12,000 pledges, four hundred fifty-five thousand. Coal tax, forty-three thousand one oh-two. Municipal stabilization, nine hundred and twenty-one thousand six thirty-five. Flood control, seventy-eight thousand three nineteen. Consolidated Public Works Board, one hundred and forty-three thousand four twenty-eight with the cemetery CD at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Sales tax, one million seven hundred and fifty-eight. American Rescue Plan account, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Backup, just a second. You wanted me to find some funding, of investing for the municipal stabilization fund. We've met, I've checked on some rates, and we met with a local bank that has Raymond James. I'm not a great fan of Raymond James. It's a brokerage CD, but they end up, they do have the better rates, so it's probably where we're invest for about 12 months.
They also have a fee, though, too, don't they?
No, they don't have any fees with this. They, we've talked to them. We've, they've explained their statement, which gives me the angst, but they explained it and said there's no way that we would lose anything on this. I do want to bring back to you the next council meeting, the West Virginia Board of Treasury Investments, which is a West Virginia Treasury-backed program, has money markets at tremendous rates.
Yep.
I'm going to check on some rates around here, but I'm positive no one can back these Treasury rates. So we'd like, I'd like to have permission to move some money around there. In order to participate in that, we would have to have a resolution approval by council.
Do you need it tonight or next?
No, I need to get resolutions for you. It's got to be on the agenda. Then the audit, we just had our, our annual audit for the year ending, June 32, last week, completed. I've got the report, but I haven't had a chance to review it, and then we will distribute that to City Council. Stockers Youth Center for the month of November, basketball and practices, there was about 60 sign-ups, continuing their after-school tutoring. So we do tutor, and they bus them over there for their tutoring. So we do have that program. They've started pickleball in there in December for Tuesdays and Thursdays. Cheer practice was a week of Thanksgiving. They had 25 attendees, and then we'll get the actual numbers on the spreadsheet to you next month for those activities. Revenues and expenditures for the month of November, revenues, two hundred sixteen thousand, expenditures, five hundred eight. Of course, we expect that. We don't have, we don't, we get influxes of taxes, property taxes, and that's when we have a big jump, and then it kind of cools down. DC elevator, for bills to be expensed, DC elevator, we had to spend four thousand one seventy-eight for the chairlift in, in the CAC, but that was training and repair. So Jerry now knows how to reset it and get it to work. So we'll have that working, both those chairs working soon. Janus Hydraulics, fourteen hundred dollars for ladder truck, extension cylinder. Cummings Sales and Service, twenty-three hundred for fire engine one exhaust cooler. Ruffy Trucking, eighty-five hundred for salt for the roads. And USA Containers, twenty-six thousand five fifty-six. You approved a bid to Conex boxes for this training facility. Speaking of training facility, we got a word today that that grant from the Assistance to Firefighters grant was denied. So we got that information today. And you got that too, didn't you, Jason? Okay. The Public Services Commission update on waste collection issued their report on inflation index calculations for garbage collection services. Their information was distributed to all waste haulers in West Virginia. So this is a recommendation to all waste haulers in West Virginia. The rate will increase, the waste, the rate increase that the waste department can pass on to customers to 0.94%. They've been doing this for about the past three years.
What is that again?
It's a, so they study the inflation index, and they come up with a factor, which is 6.94% that can be passed on to customers. That's, you know, increasing cost of new inflation. Waste Collection Board approved the increase for the Waste Collection Service Bill, and notices will be sent out to all waste customers about this increase, and that'll take effect February the first. And then the other thing, working on with Tom, is the update of the floodplain ordinance. There's some language in there that needs to be updated. And I believe that's it.
You want to go ahead with the call for election while you're there?
In your packet, you've got call for the election. As you know, next May, there's an election for city, and we combine our election with, with the county. It is for the mayor and three council seats. Let me find my call. So, a general election for the city of Buchanan is called to be held on the second Tuesday in May of 2024 for the purpose of electing mayor for a four-year term. Three council members at large for four-year term. Precincts are precinct eight, Buchanan Academy Elementary, precinct nine, City Hall, precinct 12, Fred Everly Technical Center, precinct 14, Buchanan Academy Elementary. Persons interested in filing for the office may begin so on January the 8th, Monday, January the 8th, and until Saturday, January the 27th. That day is a Saturday, so City Hall will be open on January the 27th, final day to be able to file, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. to noon. You can also mail certificates and announcements by the deadline. They have to be postmarked by that deadline of January 27th by U.S. Mail. Last date to the withdrawal, if you file and you decide to withdraw, is Tuesday, February 13th. Drawing for position on the ballot will take place Tuesday, February 20th at 9:00 a.m. Deptsure County Courthouse, located at the courthouse at forty, forty West Main Street. All voters must be registered and must vote in particular precinct in which they're registered. So that's the call for the election. We, as a footnote, the library levy will be up, it expires, so we're, we're going to play a timing game here a little bit. The library levy expires in, on June 30th, 26. So the next election after that is May of 26. So we're going to hold off doing the library levy until November, this November. And then we'll call for that five-year levy, and it'll run from July of 26 to 2030. So just wanted to let you know the timing of those things.
Something failed. We have one more chance.
You'd have one more chance.
It has, it has consistently
Sure.
always been reported.
Yeah, it would be, it's, the library levy is like 3% on class, three cents on class two on every hundred. So basically, it's about $30 for every hundred thousand dollars of assessment on class two.
Class four significantly more.
Six cents, $60.
And if you and Mr. O'Neil could let us know how we can appropriately, with allowable, to promote or to encourage that passing of that levy.
Generates about a hundred, this will generate about a hundred thirteen thousand for the library.
What I'm saying is, you know, I don't know what the city's allowed to do, what to like, you know, if you can clarify that for me from a PR standpoint, to like to take up, you know, like to promote that within the boundaries.
Do you need, do you need a motion to, to approve the call for election?
I don't think we've ever motioned a call.
It's just under, it's just for discussion?
I don't recall ever motioned for a call for election.
I think it's, it's an exercise that has to be done, call for election. So it's officially been made.
Advising the public there's an election, and you're going to
Amy, is this numbers wrong for the basketball sign-ups? There's usually about 350 kids.
Oh, they're not done. They're, they're far from finished.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. They're, they're, this is just what would happen in November.
Oh, okay.
They're still, they're still signing up.
You, you want to, you want to talk about the holiday schedule while you're up there too?
I'll start Tom on the bus for this one.
Well, he's sitting right next to me, so that's why I came out here.
There we go. The holidays are in your packet. You saw those. They're actually the same holidays we've had in the past, except for one, we have removed Good Friday from that. That's not a legal holiday. That's listed in the West Virginia Code. The rest of them are all listed in the West Virginia Code. The other change is that the holidays, the legal holidays that are called, declared by the governor, and he would include the city. Now, sometimes when they declare, they say, this is state employees only. This cities do what they want. They don't necessarily declare them for us. Excuse me. So that's your holidays. Same things before. Took one, but added declared if they're declared for cities to be included.
Make the motion we approve.
Second.
Some motions from by Mr. Sanders to approve the slate of holidays as presented. There's a second by Mr. McCauley. Any discussion? You're in the need for none. We'll call for that question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Likes unopposed. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you, Ambi. All right. Up next is our fire chief. Good evening.
Y'all need a break?
Move on.
I do. Move on. I'll try to be as quick as possible. In your packets are through October, year-to-date, plus the, the October responses. And actually, October 2023 was probably one of the slowest months we've had in three years. But November did pick up, and December started off like a crazy too. So I wanted to, I did make sure everybody knew, last week, we, we did lose a legend at the fire station. Buddy Ray Zickfuss passed away. He'd been a city fireman for 40-plus years. Was very, I mean, it was Buddy Ray. He was at the fire station two, three times a day, stopping to get coffee, getting a newspaper. And just when everybody gave their prayers to Gene, they live upon West Lincoln Street. So it's his wishes. The family didn't, didn't do anything. So that being said, it's a big loss to us. It was a lot of fun. We all sit around when it happened, and we, it's amazing how as many people come in and out of the firehouse who have been part of the fire department. But every one of us had dozens of pictures of Buddy Ray. And we passed them. We, we enjoyed time. And actually, the morning he passed away, every year, we would have sausage, gravy, and biscuits for his birthday. And so we, we had sausage and gravy and biscuits the morning he passed away. So keep the Zickfuss family in your prayers. Last night, we had two fire incidents at the same location in a vacant building. I'm here again begging people to make sure if you have outbuildings or a vacant building in and around, to make sure they are secured. People are getting in them on these cold nights and lighting fires. So make sure your buildings are secure, even your outbuildings, your barns, your vehicles. There's a lot of people out at nighttime. So just make sure you've got everything secured. So as you all remember, the other morning was very slick. We had numerous, upon numerous car wrecks. You know, people need to slow down. You know, those, those squalls come through, and it got slick really quick. Best thing to do is pull over and let the DOH do their job, and wait 15 minutes and go on. So I want to remind the council, Saturday night, 6 o'clock, Christmas dinner at the fire department. Everybody's welcome to show up. The mayor's bringing his typical, so as far as I know. So look forward to seeing if anybody can
I guess so.
What are you bringing?
One in a minute.
They, they like, they like pans of buffalo chicken lasagna.
Pans of it.
Pans.
Wow.
Not a pan.
Do you make it?
I do.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yep. As part of the state fire marshal requirements that came out last year, every piece of fire apparatus in the fire station is, has to be equipped with an AED. Recently, we just purchased all new AEDs for an apparatus, so we stay 100% compliant with that. When Ambi spoke about the ladder truck, when we had the annual inspection done on it, one of the extension cylinders had a leak in it. So we had to take it to Janus down Flatwoods. They take it apart, put new seals in it. It's part of the whole business. Well, last week, five fire fatalities in West Virginia in five days. We are almost the top of the country in fire deaths. So there, I'm going to speak again. There's no excuse for anybody in our community not to have smoke detectors in their houses. We have them at the firehouse, call, we come and install them. There's no excuse for not having a smoke detector. Please, if you do not have one, call. We will come and put it in. Be happy to. So nobody should be without a smoke detector. And just for fun facts, we created this ruck-sack competition. It started in the fire station, but it bled out. Commissioner Tenney and her son's part of it. There's some other people at the county that are part of it. It's called Ruck-Ruck Rudolph Competition. So it's a dollar a day. So it's $31 for the month to participate, and you have to wear a 20-pound vest minimum, and how far you, you can hike or walk in the month of December. And at the end of the month, whoever has the most mileage, the money that's contributed, they, the winner takes the money and contributes to a cause of their choice. So it's not only creates some camaraderie among people, good exercise, and gets us out in the community, but also it'll go to a good cause. So any questions?
I believe so.
Have them, if I don't see anybody, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
See you Saturday.
Pardon my dress. I didn't have an opportunity to, I didn't have time to change before the meeting tonight. I'm sorry.
Looks okay in there.
Yeah. In the interest of time, I'm largely going to defer to strategic matters. I've got a number of, actually, the balance of the items on strategic are, are mine. But if anybody has anything they'd like to ask about, I'd be happy to field any questions.
Okay. We'll see you in just a second. David, that, that noise was Ambi falling out of her chair.
Was she laughing?
Yeah, laughing so hard she fell out of her chair.
Just so you know, he's still dressed better than you.
Ambi, yeah.
Goodness.
That's okay. I'll get you later.
Okay. We are down to correspondence and information. We have the building finishing notice, the public hearing, the bond ordinance for the Stocker Youth Community Center. That was held this evening, December 7th, at 6:00. We mentioned that earlier in the meeting. And then we had a public hearing, as, as you saw at the very beginning of the evening, at 7:00. We have a four-year request. This is typical for purchase orders and vendor information from Smart Procure. And then we have an advertisement for bids for the Gateway West Phase Two Street Light Hole Assemblies and Globes. That's just to finish going up the hill, finishing it out near St. Joseph's Hospital on Amelia Drive.
Can I add also, I'm going to say this for my remarks, but we have done a lot of publicity in, in announcing this event, but the public is invited in announcing this event, but the public is invited to join Burma in the Back to End for the Christmas visit to Fairyland on Saturday, December 9th, from 6 to 8 p.m. Location is on North Canoff Street in the Back to End parking lot. Children will enjoy visits with Santa and Mrs. Claus, Snow White, Sleeping Beauty, Go to Lox, and the Three Bears, Rapunzel, Hansel and Gretel, and the Three Little Pigs, along with 100 Christmas treats. Food vendors, art crafts, tables, paint painter, games, free candies, cookies, and hot chocolates are all part of this seasonal celebration. Also by Buckan and Upsher Retail Merch Association, the Back to End of the City of Buckan. Brought to you proudly by City Council.
That's commercial.
And we saw the aroused furniture.
Almost got into a gross commercial thing there.
Where's this gonna be ran?
Back to back. Add another 2,000 in your last year.
The Saturday 6th.
Yeah. Well, you're welcome. You, I was gonna mention it in my remarks at the end too, but we saved some time. I'll be, I'll be, I'll be juggling again this year, going back from, from, from there to there and there to there. So, okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. We have, under the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for 1116. We have the approval of the building and wiring permits. And then we have the approval of the payment of bills. Is there a motion?
Well, I have to abstain from paying for wiring.
That's fine. But we, I still need a motion.
Well, you want to do it separately until you can vote on the others or?
Oh, that's fine. We can. That's fine. We can.
I would, yeah, I'd recommend.
Okay. So let's do a motion to approve F1 and F3. Is there a motion to that effect? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Black side opposed. And then let the minutes reflect that Mr. Rigger will abstain from F2. Is there a motion to approve F2?
Don't move. Don't move. Second.
Everybody's motioning. We have.
Sanders and Robinson.
Okay. We, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Black side opposed. Motion carries. Sorry, I should, I should have broken them up and I, I did. We're, we're too late in the evening. Okay. G, we are, we've disposed of one, two, and three, and seven. We have four, five, and six to go. We'll bring up Mr. O'Neil, who's already at the podium, to bring us through a proposal for ordinance 466, G4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we discussed at the last meeting, you have in your packet tonight a proposed 466 to vacate three alleys, or two portions of an alley and the third alley concurrent with the Wesleyan property exchange matter. This is not for action tonight. It's really just for you to see the draft ordinance. I think this will appear either on the next meeting agenda in two weeks, or the first meeting in January. Hopefully, just we're at the mercy of the surveyor on getting the, the rest of the, the balance of this transaction consummated. And as soon as that happens, what I think we'll do is try to time this so that second reading of this ordinance will take place at the same time that the rest of the, of the transaction is, is ready to be consummated. So I'd be happy to take any questions or comments on that matter.
We'll review the draft.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, oh, sorry. No, sorry. I was just gonna go G5. Go ahead. So G5, it represents a proposed revision to a portion of the city's employee handbook. There has been some confusion regarding the applicability of the city's light duty, or as it's officially called, the Return to Work Program, which has always been intended to apply to employees who suffer workplace injuries. And there's been some confusion about the applicability of this policy towards employee injuries that are suffered or sustained away from work. It's always been the intent of the council, as I've understood it, and certainly as, as our HR lead has, has understood it, that return to work is about on-the-job injuries. Otherwise, an employee is not entitled to modified duties during the course of their convalescence, that they need to use their, if they're not able to fulfill their responsibilities, they need to take advantage of the very generous paid time off provisions that the city offers to, to its employees. So in that sense, this proposal in front of you is not, does not represent a change in policy. It merely represents a clarification. And I'd be happy to take any questions. Otherwise, this is for your consideration either tonight or at a future meeting.
We approve the modification. Second.
A motion by Mr. Rylands, a second by Mr. McCauley. Is there any further discussion on the matter? Hearing the need for none, I'll go ahead and call for that question. All those in favor of approving the modification, our Return to Work Program under G5, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Black side opposed. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, G6.
Okay. Finally, Mr. Mayor, the G6, there's a request from the Upsher County Board of Educat, or the Upsher, well, Upsher County Schools to have the city assist in the raising of a structure on East Victoria Street. City's done this a number of times with the Board of Education over the years. You have in your packet a draft letter agreement. It's the same letter agreement, as far as substantively, it has the same provisions in as the prior agreements between the Upsher County Schools and the city. And it is there for your consideration.
So how can the Upsher County Board of Education make a request when they?
It's not the, it's not, I, I shouldn't have said the Board of Education. It's coming from the superintendent, and this has been pre-cleared through the state.
Through the state. These are the same folks that almost put under the Wamsby plan for school buses? A little indifferent, you know?
I agree with Mr. Rylands. There's so many issues that we have that we've never had before. I, I worked with every school superintendent from Lynn Westphal through Sarah Stankis, and we've always had a cooperative. We wouldn't have Stocker Youth Center if it wasn't for the Upsher County Board of Education that dedicated that property to us 20 years ago. That's the fact of the matter. 30 years ago, I should say. It, but, that all said, the perilous situation that the Board of Education left us at with Wamsby, the, the absolute refusal to drop kids off in school buses that go right past the Stocker Youth Center to, so that we can help accommodate the public schoolchildren of Upsher County as part of our joint mission. It is ridiculous. And, and for this school system to hang on these obscure state standards and not allow the school system to be part of our community as they've always been, I'm, I'm opposed to further going out there and doing something for free when, when, when our, when our reward is no, 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 no. It's like, what's the question? The answer's no. That's just me.
Well, it's a, it's a much totality of the problem, as you're saying, David, and so is CJ. And I think we need to take a very strong stand in regard to the, really just the state being terrible in regard to this whole process. I mean, they even, the Foundation for Better Schools, which are private donations, they froze that. That should not be done.
They won't take the money. They, they won't take the money. Don Mester has attempted to give thousands of dollars to the school system, and they say they can't accept the money, after they've taken it every year for the last 50 years. It's just.
There was a shift. And, and I, you know, reference was made to Wamsby. And I'll once again explain what happened, which didn't involve the current school superintendent, but involved a clear, solid agreement between an independent organization from the city, Wamsby, a 501(c)(3). We had clear, concise documentation that we would pay for the use of school buses to transport our participants. And also the use of the facilities at the high school, including areas where they could bunk, and the cafeteria. And everything was, was clearly documented. And when things went awry with the school system, the pirate to be in Charleston, as well as the interim superintendent, Mr. Woltrane, just ignored those and really refused even reading. Just arrogantly told me that, no, we don't want those people on our buses. We don't want those people on buildings. So we will further explore that. But, you know, that was a very dramatic financial disaster to a otherwise very successful, and still considered a very successful event.
And then, and then make things worse, the state brags about having a 240 million surplus for August.
My theory is not directed to you.
Oh, no, 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 no. I didn't, I, I, please, I, I did not, I did not feel that at all. I, I, you know, my, my task was to just draft the agreement for your consideration. It's, substantively, it's up to you whether or not to, that is no problem.
I will say that after, after a few, after a couple of months of attempts, we, Christie and I and Russ, we've met a few times now, have been able to, to, to get in and to speak with them. Jerry and I met with them as well. Although I, I understand council's frustration, I also believe that we need to consider too, we are in this mess because of the, because of who, who left us this mess, a previous superintendent. The folks that are here, they are, I do believe they're doing their best. They're, they're at the mercy of the state. They're, they're trying to do their best for our school system to get us back to the point where we can, we can rebuild, not only financially, but academically. So, you know, I, I, but I understand the frustration. Maybe, maybe what would be best is if we maybe don't take action on this, this night. Maybe we should try to have yet another conversation, bring some folks to the table, and let's just, maybe they need to hear some of the frustrations from, from us.
That's really good.
And, and let, but let's keep it positive. I mean, because every conversation, I want to make this clear. Every conversation I've had, we, and, and I've spoke at Rotary, I've spoke different places, this is a community problem. We are at a point where if we're going to, if we're going to rebuild our school system, it is going to take more than just the current Board of Education. It's going to take more than just the people at the board office. It's going to take this community to rally behind our kids, our families, our schools, to get this back. You know, Katie and I went to, went to high school at a time when Buckan and Upsher was right up near the top of our, of our state high schools. The two, the two right here on each, on each, Jerry, Ambby, Jody, we all, we, we know what this, our high school has long enjoyed a strong reputation. This is a strong community, and we can get it back. But it's gonna take everybody to get behind it and push it forward. We can't just say, well, it's a school, it's a school system's responsibility. We gotta be willing to say, we're, we're gonna roll up our sleeves to help get this back. Because this is, this is at the crux of our economic development prowess. If we, if we, you move to a community, you want to know two things. One, how's the hospital system? And two, how's the school system? We have a great hospital system. We had a great school system. We can get back to having a great school system. But we, we are going to struggle to attract and keep people here if we don't get behind this school system and help it move forward. But, and I, do I think that this is the, the, the barometer of that? I don't know. But I think that we do need to, I think they need to hear some of our frustrations, but I think they also need to hear from us. We want to help. We want to be part of the solution. We're not just here to, you know, to.
And I agree with the mayor, and I, I was directly involved as a volunteer with that organization. So I do not want to, you know, hinder future, ongoing and future relationship with our local Board of Education. But, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that when we do ask for further conversation on this, that we ask the local superintendent to include Charleston representatives.
Yes.
They, they, they have a tendency to hide behind their, their, you know, the state shield.
Underneath the golden dome.
Well, the state, the state has showed an indifference.
Right.
That's the problem. And I think for, for Governor Justice not to be at the opening or the closing of the Wamsby thing was absolutely abhorrent. And he has not given us the attention that he should give us.
Well.
So for all these years, I thought these were our schools. These were our levies. These were our taxes. These were our schools. And now I find out, these aren't our schools. These aren't our buses. These are state property. And the state comes in and says, you've been had, you have a plethora of policy violations. And we're here to realign you to the letter of the law. And now to ask us for assistance when this is a, you know, they've, they've neutered the school board. And I think it's a little bigger of an issue than what you're, you know, I'm all for working together and solving our problems together, but it takes two to tango. And the state has shown, by observation, no willingness to collaborate. So.
I would make a motion that we table the matter pursuant to Mr. Skinner's recommendation until such time as some of us can sit down with the new superintendent.
No more than three, please. No more than three of you, please.
Well, unless it's a special.
Unless it's a special meeting.
I'll second the motion. I have a discussion on December 19th.
Yeah.
And I've mentioned it before. On December 19th, State of West Virginia, State Department of Education is going to be the Board of Education meeting presenting their plan on how they're going to remedy the issues of Upsher County Schools. I encourage everyone to be there.
Where?
Where, where is that?
It'll be at the high school.
It'll be at the high school in the auditorium. Usually, they start at 6 o'clock, right?
Yes. I have something else I wanted to add, just informationally. So I found out today that the State Board of Education meeting is going to be December 13th. And you, anyone can stream that online at 9 a.m. Normally, they do not make attachments available until after the meetings. But actually, Sarah Gaither that was here, she found out today and sent me something that says the Upsher County Schools Intervention Report will be available by 9 a.m. on December 13th, 2023. So just letting you all know, if you want to read it, you know, you can read it and follow along and stream it if you want. Now, I don't know how much the difference is going to be between what they say then and what they say here, but I think, I just wanted you guys to know if you want.
I think it's important for us to be present at, at that, or as many community members be present at that meeting as possible, because it shows community engagement that we, that we are interested in being part of the solution to help, to help achieve the, ascend back to, to where we need to be. So the motion is, we table it. That was made by, by the Davs, McCauley and Thomas. Jack, do you have any more discussion? You, you mentioned.
You don't want me to get started.
Not really. You're right.
I'll be quiet.
Okay. All those in favor of, of tabling, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Black side opposed. Motion carries. We are down to comments and announcements. Congratulations. We've made it. Pam, what do you have for us?
Okay. I just want to say that the high school is gonna have a, an event tomorrow for, the new community band's gonna be there with the choir show choirs and all that tomorrow evening. I believe it starts at 7. I'm sorry if I didn't get the time right on there. Oh, it's actually 5 to 9 tomorrow. Okay. And it's going to have show choirs in it, the high school bands, the middle school bands, and the new community, newly formed community band.
Where will it be?
At the high school. Also, tomorrow evening is a Christmas story also at CAC. It's been very successful. It's all sold out all weekend. I, I sold 175 tickets myself. We could, you know, so I could have sold probably twice that many.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Also, I wanted to bring up Jerry's event. It's December night, this Saturday, right? Jerry, what's the hours? We have 6 to 8.
Jerry.
6 to 8 p.m.
Oh, Jerry.
It'll be a great event. And also, we need to remember, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Brandt was one of our new, newest VIPS members. He passed away a few days ago. You gotta remember his family. Other than that, just want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, because I won't be here for our next meeting. Just remember the reason for the season.
You have a person graduating from college, huh?
Yes, my granddaughter. Yes.
That's great.
You even say Wilmington on her grandpa's birthday.
Congratulations.
There you go.
Mr. McCauley.
Please don't mistake my huffiness over the school system stuff for being anything other than continuously supportive of the schoolchildren of Upsher County, which I've always have been. And I'll continue. always have been, and I continue will be, but hopefully we can have a sit-down conversation with the powers that be that are running the school system, whoever they are, and clear the air on a lot of these fronts. The Dickens Fest was just terrific, it was downtown, and got lured into buying some things I otherwise wouldn't have purchased, except for the event. Great to see the garage down at Stocker, that imprint, we've got a single loose end worked out except one now, and if we can knock out that jut out with the one building, we'll be in great shape to build a first-class structure there. I just remind everyone that this is the season of giving, not just receiving, and there are so many things that you can give your $10, $20, $50 to at your's end while you take your tax deductions. The Stocker Youth Center capital campaign continues, the Colonial Theater is still selling seats on the upstairs of our project with the, it's not microscopic seating, it's just telescopic.
Telescopic.
And the Upshire County Parish House on College Avenue is another great thing to support as well, so that's all I have for this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rigger.
I want to commend Wesleyan students and Dr. Morgan's class, I recall his associate in class, but tremendous presentation on the feline ferals, and I just thought it was very well done. And, you know, our school system is a major concern, and the mayor's correct, we do have to all work together to support our kids and the future of our community. Looking forward to JC Films coming back, and what I want to appreciate, or state my appreciation to Mr. Campbell for the positive images trying to create for West Virginia. We have movies such as Wrong Turn.
That's right.
And we can go on and on. You know, the drug epidemic, we all know that, and the Appalachian Highway thing, and I appreciate his effort in posturing a positive image for this great state. That's about all we got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rigger. Mr. Thomas.
I concur to what Jack and David and Pam said, support what they said, and I have some frustrations with what the state has done, and I think we need to engage them in a way that's very proper, and they need to come to the plate at some point in time, as far as I'm concerned. I appreciate the council's being here. I, you know, I went to elementary school and middle school in the 50s, high school in the 50s also, and there's such a difference in our society. My parents were part of the greatest generation, and I'll tell you the truth, I can't remember having a counselor in my elementary school or in my junior high school. There's just a huge difference in our society, and I still think we're coming, trying to come to grips of all the different changes that have taken place, technology, you know, cell phones, computers, and social media, the entertainment industry, even our national media, and everybody, kids that shouldn't be on Facebook or social media, they get a cellphone and they can do about anything they want to. And I don't think we're ready to address that yet, unfortunately, and I'm worried about A1, artificial intelligence. We're gonna go through a tremendous change the next four or five years, and I think the nuclear family is very important, and I would encourage anything anybody can do to help children that are having problems, that is something really critical for our future, I believe. So you all have a great holiday and Christmas. I'll be here, Pam will be at a graduation, but I'll be here. Maybe I'll shave, I don't know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mr. Rylands?
Merry Christmas.
Short and sweet. Mr. Sanders?
Two things, Mr. Mayor mentioned at the beginning of the meeting of my absence for the start, and he couldn't be at two places at one time, and that's part of what my job is, is to step in in situations like that. I was very honored to attend the opening of, or to attend the presentation of the menorah lighting to celebrate the start of Hanukkah, and I want to thank Daya Masada Wright and her family, who provides that menorah each year, and also puts together that celebration. The mayor's had the honor to speak at that celebration in the past, I know former Mayor McCauley had done as well, my first opportunity to do so, and to see the attendees there was wonderful. And again, it was humbling for me to stand on that stage and represent the city of Buchanan, which is a diverse city that embraces the celebrations. One of the things I said was this park, Jawville Park, which is in the heart of our city, is the home of so many celebrations, and one thing about every celebration there is it's important to those who participate in that particular celebration. So tonight was very important to a large group of people. Thank you for trusting in me to appear on your behalf. And then the other thing is, I have to admit, you know, we do a lot of things great, and we've had many, many successes. Once in a while, we get whooped, and we got whooped, guys and girls. We announced here several weeks ago, a challenge was put out by the Upshire County Commissioners to raise food for the parish house here in Buchanan, and I guess since I was presiding at that meeting, I should've been more of the team captain there, but, you know, I dropped the ball, we all kind of dropped the ball. So I'm here to announce publicly that there was a huge benefit to the Upshire Parish House and to help those in need. Nearly 600 cans, over 600 items of food was collected, and the total's come out as 564 by the Upshire County Commission and 45 by the city of Buchanan. So I told the president of the Upshire County Commission that day, I said, get your running shoes on, because you've got a victory lap ahead of you. Now, I will go ahead, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay with you, and do that challenge for next year, for the month of November, and we are gonna have a meeting. We'll have to have an executive session, and we'll just have to make it a Jedi, but whatever. But we're gonna collect food next year, guys and girls, all right?
I already know what the plan is, he's got the plan.
I got the plan.
But we're not gonna go public with the plan.
So we're the camera, congratulations, Upshire County Commission, you did a wonderful job, and our hats off to you, but wait till next year, we're coming.
They don't enjoy the victory lap too long.
Well, it's important to congratulate them for one thing. I mean. They did a great, great job, and I will do a formal press release for those wondering with some photos and so forth, so. But anyway, congratulations, President Tenny and other commissioners up there.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for attending the menorah lighting this evening. Last year, the beginning of, the first night of Hanukkah was on a Sunday night, one of the conflicts, but we all know how Thursdays go in Buchanan, so appreciate you being there and supporting the efforts, and I think that event has grown each year that they've had it, so tonight is the first night of Hanukkah, December 7th through 15th, so we don't want to forget that. Hope everyone has a very happy, yes, sir?
When you're done, I have something, please.
Go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
This Saturday, the night of December, there is a free Veterans Appreciation Breakfast at the American Legion Hall from 8 till noon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Hope everybody has a very happy holiday season, and remember the reason for the season, check in on neighbors, especially if it gets cold again, you know, we had that awful cold snap last year, but if you know somebody that doesn't have a family to go to and might be spending Christmas by themselves, maybe invite him over to your house for Christmas for a dinner, if it goes any way, because this is a very happy time, but it also has a dark side, and there's a lot of depression around Christmas each year, so let us remember that, and hope everybody has a great time with their family and friends, and enjoys the rest of the events for the season here in town and around the state. And with that, at 9:30, I'd entertain a motion that we adjourn.